Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, April 27, 2021. And this is the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Michigan City Plan Commission. Skylar will call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Espard?
Here.
Mr. Gallus?
Here.
Mr. Grandquist? Mr. Gresham? Mr. Clender? Let's uh, I see Dan popping in, if I might, Mr. President, may I, may I just hold up for a minute to give people, just to see who all pops in?
Yeah, sure.
Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Grandquist, how are you?
Hi, good.
Hello.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. Uh, Dan, we're in the middle of calling roll call and you're up. Mr. Grandquist?
I'm here.
Mr. Gresham? I do not see. Mr. Clender? I do not see. Mr. Spurling?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
I'm here.
Mr. Zimmer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, before I accept a motion for approval of the agenda for this evening, I just want to point out that there is an addendum. So I'm assuming everybody has seen the original agenda as well as the addendum, which has two more items under Old New Business. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I both to approve.
One second.
Give me one second. Ms. Espard?
Aye.
Mr. Gallus?
Yes.
Mr. Grandquist? Mr. Spurling?
Yes.
Mr. Wright? Jeff?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmer?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is our one and only petition this evening.
Oh, approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Uh, approval of minutes from the last regular meeting, which is March 23rd. I assume everybody had a chance to review those. If there's no changes or questions, I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from the March 2021 meeting.
Second.
Ms. Espard?
Aye.
Mr. Gallus?
Yes.
Mr. Grandquist?
Yes.
Mr. Spurling?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmer?
Yes.
Motion approved. Um, let me check. Someone just emailed me. I think it's Gresham, Mr. Gresham. He's log, he's trying to log in right now, so we can keep moving. We have a quorum.
Okay. Do we want to wait a minute or should we just continue?
I, I would say that it's your decision, Mr. President.
Let's give him a couple of minutes.
Okay.
So, uh, just a good time for commissioner questions? Do uh, do all the votes have to be a roll call vote?
I would probably defer to Steve to that.
That would be like a parliamentary inquiry, right?
All votes on petitions and resolutions have to be by roll call. The others could be by voice vote if the president so asked.
Okay, well, let's just, um, let's just move on to the first petition.
Here's Mr., I see Mr. Gresham logging in right now, so, um, yeah, but we can move, we can move forward. Would you like for me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, our first petition tonight is petition P dash 101 dash 21, and it's a petition for Mr. Coleman Moore requesting rezoning from OS Office Service to R1D Single Family Residential, and the property is located at 201 Hoyt Street. And I do see Mr. Uh, Mr. Moore, yes, Mr. Coleman, uh, he's here tonight and he'll be representing himself. Uh, I'm gonna hand the floor over to Coleman to, um, to kind of explain the situation and then I can weigh in as needed.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, um, my name is Coleman Moore. My primary residence is 201 Hoyt Street, Michigan City, Indiana. Um, I lived in this house for probably about 20 years. Um, and I'm here to ask for a rezoning from office space to R1D. My guess is where here was done probably about 2010, 2011, upon that administration. Um, the reason I'm asking for it because what a rezon is with the office space rezoning and now confirming, it's, it kind of messes up my property rights here. It's hard for me to sell my house. It's hard to refinance my house. And the thing is, if my house burned down over 51%, I cannot rebuild on this lot that I live in right now. So that's the reason why I'm here today. Um, I guess it was some years ago that my house and some other houses in the neighborhood was all, um, was all rezoned as office space without, I don't remember sending no kind of notification from, no kind of meeting known whatsoever or nothing. It was just done. I guess it was just done. So that's the reason why I'm here to go back from, for a rezoning from office space back to R1D, which it was originally.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moore. So Skylar, do you want to fill us in a little bit more on this?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I would say that he represented it very, very well. Um, this was done maybe in 2008 to 2010 time range, time, timeframe. I'm not sure what the administration was then, or I just know that there was a blanket rezoning of the whole entire city. It was actually done, I think, in conjunction. There was a countywide zoning ordinance that was passed. Um, and I think it was all done collectively at that time. Uh, if you notice, our, our zoning is very similar to the county. So I think they took it upon themselves to write all these, all the codes kind of collectively so that they match as our cities grow and we go into the county annex, things of that nature. It makes sense, right? Um, through doing that, I think that at that time, and I guess I'm, I'm kind of assuming at this point in time, I don't know the total, you know, planning theory that was going on with the planners at that time who, who put this in place, who, who made, who made the maps and et cetera. Uh, my theory is that they thought St. Anthony's would stay or, or the hospital would stay where it is and that therein it might need more space to expand or there might be some, um, need for other office space off, offsite. Um, so I think that that's where we're at. So, um, let me read you my report. I think I sent it out to all of you and I think I provided like a, I tried to provide an overview of the whole neighborhood showing the amount of OS in that area. Keep in mind that tonight we're here to discuss, uh, Mr. Moore, you know, this is a very specific topic that petition that we're discussing tonight. It's Mr. Moore's petition and there is some timeliness to it. But I want to explain and maybe we can have a, a discussion after, after I read my report, if that's okay. So, uh, my report tonight is, is on case P dash 101 dash 21. It's a rezoning of 201 Hoyt Street, uh, for Mr. Coleman Moore. The request, the request, uh, is a rezoning of parcel of land located at 201 Hoyt Street from OS, which is Office Service District to R1D Single Family Residential District. Staff analysis, the property in question is currently zoned OS, which is an office, uh, an office service zoning district. OS does not allow for single family use. The single family homes with OS zoning are considered illegal, non-conforming uses at this time. The planning staff assumes that the intention of the OS zoning was to complement the hospital by allowing some of the homes directly adjacent to be used as small medical offices or, uh, other office spaces needed. Uh, the hospital has moved out to the, out of the neighborhood to a new location and now many of the homes in the neighborhood have OS zoning, although they are still being used as single family residents. Uh, allowing these homes to be rezoned back to R1D Single Family will make the purchase and financing of the homes much more viable. This area of town will benefit from the rezoning to allow for the continued use of the homes as residences and continued investment in the housing stock. The parcel before the plan commission tonight is an individual parcel that is zoned OS. Rezoning this parcel to R1D will allow the existing home to retain its residential use by right. It will also allow the homeowner to refinance their home and take advantage of lower rates and sell the home using traditional lender financing should they choose, so choose, so should they so choose. The current OS zoning does not allow for the new resident, for a new residential structure to be built in the case of catastrophic loss of property, which lenders want assurance before guarantee, granting financial, finance approval. Uh, this area has been identified as general residential in our comprehensive plan future land use map. Um, according to Indiana Code 36 dash 0 dash 4 dash 30603, and considering this request for rezoning, the plan commission shall pay reasonable regard to, one, the comprehensive plan, two, current conditions and the character of the, of the current structures and uses in each district, three, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, and four, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and five, responsible development and growth. Staff recommendation. Staff, planning staff has reviewed the proposed request for the rezone of the, of the subject parcel and recommends approval of the petition. And I might add that I think now that St. Anthony's has moved out, they're, they're demolishing the structure. Um, that leaving this area uh, as OS is more of a detriment to this neighborhood with respect to reinvestment in the homes as they currently exist and are currently used. Um, I think we need to take it upon ourselves as a plan commission to really look in depth at, there's about a hundred or so parcels there. Um, I think it would behoove us to, and, and benefit the neighborhood to really take a look at these 100 parcels. I don't think all of them need to be residential, but the mass majority of them need to be, uh, addressed and rezoned back to an R1D, a B1 neighborhood commercial supporting. There are some commercial little nodes in there. Um, and I think we need to do that, uh, relatively soon because right now we have a housing, a housing shortage in the city of Michigan City, and, and I think if we leave it, we're gonna see less and, less encouragement of investment into that neighborhood, which we, we really do need, and it's a quite a few of, quite a bit of housing stock there that could really benefit from this. So I'll leave it at that and I'll open, if you have questions, please ask me.
Uh, Mr. President, if I could?
Yes, please.
Um, I will say, I can't remember if it was when Mr. Phillips was the planner or even the previous administration from that one. Um, we definitely went through this process with countywide zoning where we were trying to queue up the Laporte Code, the Michigan City Code and the County Code. And even at that time, we knew part of the process was automated and there were parcels that fell through the cracks, so to speak, that probably weren't ideally done just because it was physically impossible to identify every single parcel correctly. Uh, so the process by which, uh, we should be, we should be fixing these. Um, this is a, a pretty automatic thing. I think Skylar correctly hit on the integrity of the neighborhood and what we're looking to do over there, especially with the change in the status of the hospital over the last few years. And, um, I would fully support this change and then, you know, if we need to have a deeper conversation as a group about, you know, this area in general and what we can do as a, as a group to fix it long-term, so we don't have to have more people come in front of this group with these kind of issues, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I'm, oh.
So Skylar, how do we get this process started?
Um, I think what we, well, tonight we need to deal with, uh, Mr. Moore's petition. I know he's probably really anxiously to see if we've but further, to further, uh, what we need to do in the future, uh, and future meetings, I think we need to hold a, uh, somewhat of a public workshop and, and invite these affected property owners and make sure that they understand what we're trying to do because we are gonna rezone and that's, that can be a little bit nerve, nerve wracking, like, what, what are you rezoning me to? Well, you know, we want to make sure that we're not rezoned. We also want to make sure that we're being, um, specific to the, 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 the nature of the building because there are some buildings down there that are, were historically commercial buildings and are still used commercially. We don't want to change them to something that is obsolete for them as well. So we want to make sure that we're very, we really want to drill down on the uses, uh, each individual use. Now, most, the major, mass majority of that is, is residential use, be it single family or multifamily, uh, you have residential use there. But I think that would be our first step is to, uh, talk to Mr. Hale about it. And that's kind of been our approach is we need to probably have a public meeting to invite these guys, to invite these affected owners and, and make sure that we, that they understand what, what we're gonna do and why we're doing it. And then have it brought before the public, at a, at a public hearing similar to Mr. Moore tonight and, and basically start that process to, to make sure that we, uh, rezone it in a proper manner and that we, uh, address any issues that could be, you know, could be detrimental to anything we, we rezone at that point in time. Um, which I think, uh, Mr. Gresham hit right on the head that I'm not sure they took a parcel by parcel look at the rezoning originally. And honestly, that's probably why you're seeing some of the rezonings come to us that we've had in the recent past, so.
100% they didn't. I ca, I can tell you for a fact when we were talking about these, we knew that there would be outliers in this process.
Um, I just think, you know, like I said, tonight, we really need to just, um, you know, I need to deal with Mr. Moore's petition for, you know, definitely tonight, um, and I think it makes total sense and um, there's other people, I have friends that live in that neighborhood who own houses that are OS and now they, now they're asking me and, you know, I've been telling, you know, I've told them kind of similar things that, that, you know, this is kind of what, how we need to do this, so.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hale, do you want to give your report on this?
Um, sure. Uh, my attorney report is for petition P dash 101 dash 21. The petitioner is Coleman Moore and Coleman Moore Jr. and Alyssa D. Moore are the owners. The petition, as you know, is for rezoning from OS to R1D Single Family Residential for the property at 201 Hoyt Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I would initially advise the, um, plan commission that I've had an opportunity to review all of Mr. Moore's notice documentation. I find that it's, uh, totally in order. Uh, and he has satisfied all of our requirements and you're free to consider this matter. Next, I would just remind you that Indiana Code, um, permits, uh, owners of property to initiate a zoning change such as this. And the plan commission then is required to follow the procedure set out in Indiana Code, conduct a public hearing tonight, and then certify the proposal to the Michigan City Common Council. Uh, again, reminding you that the ultimate result is an ordinance and only the common council has the power to enact an ordinance. So we are to certify to the common council after our deliberations and a public hearing uh, that we are sending this on to them with a favorable recommendation or with an unfavorable recommendation or with no recommendation. Mr. York, uh, clearly indicated to you the standards that you are to pay reasonable regard to. They're listed in his report or listed in my report. I would remind you again that not only does Indiana Code set forth these standards, but our zoning ordinance also sets forth in section 30 dash 07, these same decision criteria. So you are to consider these matters and then, um, approve this commission, this petition. And then, uh, if you do approve it, you would certify it uh, to the Michigan City Common Council, and I have submitted for your consideration a certification of the plan commission, uh, of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, to use to send immediately following your decision tonight to the common council so that they may consider enacting, uh, an appropriate ordinance. So again, well, following the, uh, public hearing and further comments by this board, um, I think it would be appropriate to consider a motion uh, on the petition, uh, followed by a motion to approve the certification that I submitted to you the other day. That's my report.
Thanks, Mr. Hale. Any questions or comments from commission members?
I'd like to, um, uh, thank Mr. Moore for coming here, and this is a shame that you got stuck in between this scenario here of, of, of not necessarily bad zoning, but you got caught here, my friend. And the fact that you can't avail yourself of the same services, including refinancing, insurance and many other things, I think is a shame. So I'd like to employ my other commissioners to come to a quick vote on this and then to bring this to the city council and get the ordinance changed so that many of these people can go and do what they, what all of us could do in our properties here in Michigan City. And I, and I thank you for coming here and taking your time to address this because this is unfortunate, but hopefully we'll come to a good conclusion here. I'd also like to have a motion to approve the, um, uh, estate here from Mr. Hale and to send to the, uh, uh, council for review.
Steve, you're on mute. Well, before we have a motion though, we have to open it for public comment and then we'll take a motion. So if there's, or if there's any other comments from commission members, uh, I'll take them or we'll open it for a public comment as well.
If I could ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes.
And this might be directed to either Mr. York or Mr. Gresham. It sounds like you both have, um, prior experience and maybe this specific uh, type of petition. I was wondering if, uh, it sounds like we anticipate that this sort of petition will come before the planning commission. Um, if Mr. Moore isn't the first, he's certainly not going to be the last. I'm wondering, um, I think Skylar mentioned you had a hundred or so parcels um, in this, what I'll kind of call old hospital area that is zoned OS, um, that are really legal but non-conforming single family residences. Have we had a petition like Mr. Moore in this area come before the board before or is he the first?
The, in my time here, this is the first. Now, um, right now, we're, we're seeing a very low refinancing options, so I'm sure, I bet he's not the only one out there thinking about it at this time, if there's other owners. But at this time, I can't recall in my last eight years here one in this area that's come forth for rezoning. Um, I can't recall one that's happened like this.
Same here. This is the first I've seen.
And you, you'd mentioned, Skylar, that some of these are actually OS properties. And when we talk about moving forward after today and after Mr. Moore, um, maybe potentially rezoning this whole area, some of those properties would still stay OS. If you could put an estimate on how many would end up going residential, how many are currently being used as homes?
I would venture to say, and this is, I haven't driven the roads. I've clicked on a lot of them today, counted the parcels and kind of looked at them. Uh, you know, that's just me looking at them. They may be totally different from what the assessor's website, you know, picture is, uh, use wise. Um, if there's a hundred of them, I would say at least 60 or 70 of them, at least, if there's a hundred. I may be shooting that a little bit, over half, over half. I would definitely bet on over half. Yeah.
And just in thinking about, because one of our considerations and what would be in our certificate is that, um, our changes in zones wouldn't be considered spot zoning. Uh, and I can see that Mr. Moore's property is, he's definitely on the outskirts of this OS anyway. So I don't really have that concern for spot zoning if we were to approve this today. Um, but it just sounds like most of what we've heard is that it sounds like the planning commission may be rezoning this entirely residential because that fits more like it in, in line with what will happen with this area, especially with Franciscan and their new hospital.
Yeah, and if I could just add a comment, I don't consider the spot zoning knowing that what we're planning to attempt to do with this area. Um, now, if we were to try to convey, uh, an M1 in there or an M2 there somewhere, I, I don't think we're talking about that. We're totally talking about neighborhood zoning here that would, um, put benefits of zoning, uh, uh, allow them to do neighborhood, um, functional uses there. Um, even some of the commercial properties there would still be neighborhood supporting uses, um, with small businesses, things of that nature, you know, so.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commission members or from the general public? So hearing none. Um, so Andy, do you want to, uh, give your motion?
Larry, Paul wants to talk.
Okay, yeah. Hello, Paul. You have to unmute yourself.
Working on it. Um, Paul Prisbalinski, um, resident, 1716 Washington Street. Current, currently the councilman for the second ward, which this, uh, uh, is taking place in. And, uh, previously to that, I served on the city council for 17 years and also served on the plan commission for, for two ter, for two years. Um, I, I would hope that the bo, the board moves quickly on Mr. Coleman's petition. And I will say that I don't understand the theory behind what they did here. Um, I've lived in that neighborhood right across the street from the hospital for, uh, um, as a, growing up in that neighborhood and then living in the neighborhood, so a total of my childhood and adult life, when Mr. Coleman got ahold of me and knowing what I know about the process, I, I couldn't believe that this has actually happened to these, uh, residential properties. And I understand by the code that all that has to be done now is to advertise it in the newspaper. This is just for some history on, on the process, which I understand is, uh, Under that mass zoning change back in two thousand and eight, I believe it was with the county and in the port. I I believe that. I believe that knowing the process is that you buy a property. And then or if it's contingent thing, there is a I know that there's been many properties. Have been rezoned on a contingency of. Wanting to buy to open a business in that particular area. I've sat in on some of them, but not. That the city changed an existing zoning. A property just as. A mass. Blanket zoning and if you want to talk about rezoning something. I believe on the on the part of the city that was done at that time because. I don't think any of us were here at that time. That the city did what I consider. Financial harm to these residentially zoned properties, whether it be for resale. Whether it be for now, think of this scenario. An individual has a fire in their home. And then they're they're told that. They cannot rebuild. They're limited to how much the insurance will. Pay on it because their zoning is out of line. So, I mean, there's there's a bunch of things to talk about here, but. My my other, I have a question. I hope that the board approves this. Steve, miss, excuse me. If I may, Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Hale a question?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Hale, are you gonna have a? Ordinance prepared yet tomorrow so it can be on the agenda for our next meeting? For this but for this property?
I'm sorry, I I forgot to unmute myself. Yes, I can do that.
Because I I want to move quickly on this. Mr. Moore is covered, but also that I I've had several discussions. With Mr. York. And I I am going to. Ask our attorney to prepare something or Mr. Hale in connection. To bring a petition to the. Unless Mr. York wants to do that on his own, but I think that we need to expedite this thing. To free up these properties. So these people can. If if somebody else wants to do something with their property, but. Just the fact that they're now they are being hampered. If something tragic happens to their property. And they're told that they can't rebuild or they're not going to pay them that amount of money. And I believe that. There are a lot of lot of homes in that area, so my other. Point that I wanted to bring out. When I said that people usually buy a property and then they get it rezoned for use. Why would we rezone all these properties? And give the hospital the upper hand to go and tell people that well, your home isn't worth anything as a residential. It's office space. So, I mean, I thought it was. Very, very. Odd that this happened that what my history is from sixteen twenty Wall Bass Street with my father's home. What what all these years of. History with the hospital. So. For them, for them to be presumptuous. To do this. To all these properties. In the center, it's always been whole history of that area is a residential use. I mean, there's a couple properties that they own on Wall Bass Street. But I don't think they're. OS or should be OS. I personally think all the properties should go back to their original zoning. If something wants to be done. That least the residents will be notified. If the hospital wants to do something or or buy some properties that exist right now. So hopefully that we can get this resolved. And look at. What what went on in that whole zoning rezoning map of Michigan City? I have talked to people in county government and there's a lot of things that they Xed out of that blanket rezoning. So there's a lot of history and just because it happened doesn't make it right. And I don't think the due diligence was done on the city council's part as reviewing that. Document when it was that blanket rezoning happened in the whole city.
I I think we're all on the same page here that this is not the way the city operates anymore, so. Regardless of what the history is, we're moving forward with. Making sure this never happens again and correcting the the wrongs of the past. So, Mr. Sterling, Berling, see, oh, there you are. Andy, so or if we're ready now for your motion, if you'd like to make it.
Someone else can make the motion. I was just, I'm fine. Well, if that's the case, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gresham. I I would say that I would move at this time to approve. Of the petition for rezoning by Mr. Moore to rezone his property from OS. To I believe he is going to, is it R one?
R one D.
R one D.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I believe. Before we get too deep, but don't we need a recommendation of some kind favorable, non-favorable or non?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was going to ask Ms. Espir if she would modify. Her motion to include that it be sent on to the. Common Council of Michigan City with either a favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation, one of the three.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. I'm sorry. I I was thinking it was a two-part process. I would move to approve the petition for rezoning by Mr. Moore. And that the plan commission certified to the common council that this for that this request for rezoning. Is given with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Skylar?
Miss Espir? Mr. Gallus? Mr. Granquist? Mr. Spurling?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Wright? Mrs. Zimmer? Motion approved. Oh, sorry, Mr. Gresham. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Gresham.
I I know I was a bit late, but yes.
Sorry.
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Moore, and thank you again for bringing this before the city. So that we could get this ball rolling and correct correct all these. The correctness and mistake.
I I would just ask that this is a two-step process as Ms. Espir pointed out. The second part of this is to approve and adopt the certification of the plant commission of the city of Michigan City, Indiana. This is the formal document that we send on to the common council with our favorable recommendation. And you have a copy of that. And a motion, I think, just a simple motion to approve that certification would be in order.
I would move for the approval of that certification for its forward to the common council.
I would second.
Okay, I'll call real. Miss Espir? Mr. Gallus? Mr. Granquist? Mr. Gresham? Mr. Spurling? Mr. Wright? And Mr. Zimmer? Motion approved. So Skylar, then I assume then you'll do. Take this. To the next level, then either organize the meeting with the.
Even I will submit it to the clerk's office and in order to get it on the next council agenda. And then Paul, I'm assuming you're going to sponsor?
Yeah, I I'm definitely gonna sponsor it and I was hoping that we could get this done so it can get on the agenda and. Start moving forward on it because since it's not a. Financial matter, I was gonna ask for first and second reading at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Thank you, Coleman.
And then Skylar, in connection with that, can we get the next steps carved out for how to? Look at this parcel by parcel and in the area in general?
Yep, I'm I've actually kind of started kind of putting pen to paper today. I sent you guys an overview, but what I've done is kind of started looking at some of those properties and and. Just making sure that we're taking the steps to make a suggestion of what we should rezone, you know. I I think going back to an R one D, I I don't see anything other than single family or R one D to that to that matter. But yes, I can lay that out for us like what the next steps are.
Excellent. Thank you, Skylar.
Assuming there's no more questions or comments about this petition, then we're going to move on to new business, old business. And if anybody has any comments, we can make it now before we move into Clarence Hulse's presentation.
I I don't have any old business. I know that you guys had. Asked Clarence to come do his economic development presentation. And I do believe he's with us today and I think he's ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm getting set up here, so give me a second. Good evening. Good evening. How are you guys? My privilege to be here to speak to the planning commission. Enjoy telling people what's going on in the city. Lots of great things going on, so Scott, permission to share screens. Can I have permission to share screen?
Yes, you should have permission.
When you see him on a screen.
Clarence, is there any way to improve your audio? So we could hear you a little clearer?
Let's stop the video. Is that better?
A little bit better, yeah.
Okay, you can hear me better. Scott is indicating.
Clarence, you're kind of a staticy fading out. Can you hear us?
BBC was able to work with the city council, the mayor. The private business community to, you know. It was a year where we were able to pivot very quickly, but also get get some stuff done. Using this or as our model for the past two years. Economic prosperity for all. We do see that, you know, we're trying to make sure that everybody gets a piece of the pie. What's happening in Michigan City, so we have a lot of partners in the community, nonprofits. Private business, the school board, just trying to find ways to work together to make sure. The residents have ways to not only have a job, but also make their own job by being a business owner. You know, our economic, our our plan, one of our agenda is to work for economic inclusion. As in, you know, how do we make sure all residents can get a piece of economic pie? So that's been on my mind for the. From the last three years and always trying to find ways to do that within the city. We also work on workforce development, total attraction. Prior pandemic, it was challenging to find people. Qualified people to go to work. Now, I'm sure you're aware. It's not a bigger problem, whether it's extended benefits, childcare. People being a leary of being sick, employers are having a difficult time finding people. We also are very. Pro place making. Want to make sure the city is beautiful. Want to make sure we have places where people want to live, play and. Invest and that doesn't only mean downtown, it means having our neighborhoods, our parks, our corridors. Looking very pleasant, so we always try to encourage the city and our partners to, you know. Make the city look better in whatever way we can. Also, I want to be there effective in telling our story. A lot of great things are happening here. How do we keep getting the word out? To across the country and of course, you know, we don't have, you know, multiple million of budgets, so we're all trying to find ways to work with our local business. Partners to be your ambassadors to tell about what's happening here in Michigan City. And last but not least, how do we ensure our companies stay alive within all the technology and what's coming? We're always trying to make sure companies can can modernize through technology, new equipment and find ways to enhance that through working with. Manufacturing entities, manufacturing programs, BMW. But just different engineering programs across the country that bring here to Michigan City. Business attraction development is something we do, you know, daily. What you have here is a list of requests for information. We get about a hundred or so a year. Last year, we got ninety-three requests for information from. Perfect the companies looking to move across the country and so we get listed as a possible location. What I have here is kind of what the the most general things they ask for. Land, building size, ceiling heights, acreage, so we have been tracking this the last seven years. I I just give you the last three years snapshot, but kind of give you an indication of what the market is looking for, so we we would take that and then look at. The marketplace and so we look at what are the most requested the past three years. People looking for building between seventy thousand square feet to a hundred thousand square feet. Twenty-six to thirty-foot ceiling height and one to ten acres, ten acres minimum, so that's kind of the most requested of the last three years of. Companies that are either looking to expand or move across towards Indiana or Indiana. Some of our highlights from twenty twenty, we work with fifteen on fifteen projects in twenty twenty. Newer expansion relocation projects. Over almost six hundred jobs projected. Hundred seventy-five jobs retained of companies that could have left or jobs that could have gone somewhere else and over sixty-one million dollars invested. In our community. We assisted over a hundred twenty-one companies in the city and that's valid manufacturers, that's small business, medium-sized business. Manufacturers, other doors who are looking to for help within within the community. And we're able to either add or. Over almost two hundred thousand square feet of which. Two hundred thousand square feet of that is added, that's the new JF facility was two hundred thousand square feet, so that's the biggest. Add to the community last year. For the project we worked with last year, these were some of them were noms last year, but Shady Creek, of course. Bybit, that's the hemp company expanded seven million dollars. Hurd side expansion, thirty million dollars, Harbor Trust, you know, four hundred thousand expansion. JB West, about three million dollars, two hundred jobs. AquaGenics is a biotech company, forty million project, a new company moving here, sixty jobs. Bio tech scientists, they're still on the renovation, they won't start hiring. Um, of, um, bio, uh, tech scientists, um, they're still on the renovation, they won't start hiring public to end of the year. But here's what a project we had that came through office last year. Local, local companies, expansions, it gives a little more detail on where they are, what they spent in the job projections. These are all new projects to the city. So these are companies that weren't here, that are now here, um, or have moved into a new location in the city. Software initiatives, uh, beside the working with the business community, we also do a number of things in the community. Uh, we were about to start the neighborhood liaison program last year. We had the first class in, uh, February and then of course, uh, COVID nineteen hit, so we had to delay that. We're hoping to get that restarted, uh, hopefully this fall. Um, we're, we have, uh, two meetings every year with all the commercial brokers in the region and also software colleagues again. The past year and a half, it's all been on Zoom, but, um, in the past, we usually have a breakfast and Danish, uh, meeting with, uh, talk with all the market updates, uh, that's going on in the, uh, city. We also have a big job fair of the year. Uh, this year, uh, we were able to do it, uh, last year was virtual, this year we had a mini job fair. Thirty companies, um, of which we had about twenty people showed up, not good. Again, more jobs than people right now in the community. We're working on a small market initiative right now. Uh, two parts of the city are, have been called by the USDA as food deserts. So we're trying to find ways with, uh, produce, with extension on how to, uh, resolve those issues, whether that's a supermarket, whether that's a food co-op or people doing, uh, community gardens, but how do we, um, uh, help people find the right foods in their community in Michigan City? We're also working on a business coworking space technology innovation project. That study was funded by the commission, hired a consultant with, with the dollars and that's underway. We're hoping to have it wrapped up by hopefully end of next month. But the goal is to do some kind of technology, um, innovation center, uh, project in Michigan City to help entrepreneurs, uh, in our city to start their business and do well in Michigan City. And we're trying to, uh, ensure to, uh, if you build that, it will give us some fund by the US, uh, EDA. They have a lot of money right now that given away the next two years, so we'd like to be able to apply for some funds to either build a new facility or we have an old facility. Within the downtown footprint of Michigan City. Again, software investments that are planned, uh, last year for this year. We are probably expecting about three hundred million worth of multifamily, um, projects in twenty twenty-one. Those all began, uh, either two thousand nineteen or twenty twenty, so we're working through the process to get those started. The, uh, under project that's kind of, got announced, so trying to get off the ground. Lakeshead Home, uh, they have what, ten units they're telling they want to get started this, this, uh, this spring. Auburn Point, looking to do two or three apartments in the center of the city. Again, we had about four companies do this last year, looking at space in Michigan City. About seven multifamily investor developers looking at the city, uh, last year. Annexation was completed also, um, earlier this year, uh, then the planning commission was able to rezone a few of those acres from, uh, agriculture to, uh, manufacturing, which we were happy for because, uh, we were hoping to, um, initiate those processes so we can start having some new projects in, in those areas, uh, probably next year because, uh, we'll get the TIF hopefully that, that, ever this year and then start working on getting projects in, uh, next year. As many of you are aware, we're undergoing a real estate boom in Michigan City and we've been, uh, tracking that and, um, looking at the last three years. You can see what the percentage change in median price have been, uh, in Michigan City. Good for, good for the city and good for people who, who want to, um, you know, get some equity in their, in their homes. Since for a long time those flats are going under, so, um, that's overall positive. As far as what we're doing right now, we're working with the, the city of Michigan City, City of La Porte and County to do a housing, um, uh, county-wide housing assessment, uh, feasibility study. How to attract more developers in the community to build more single-family, build, uh, you know, workforce housing and, you know, afford luxury housing and forth. But, uh, how do we get people to be able to afford a home in Michigan City, but also, um, build more single-family and more subdivisions here in, in, in their future? So that's one of our focuses for this year and next year. Along with that, we've been also been tracking the, uh, commercial industrial sales countywide and this gives you an idea from to the last five years, what's been going on in La Porte County, um, in terms of commercial industrial sales across the whole county. Want to point to you, uh, this heat map the past five years where most of the activity has been is actually Michigan City. So, um, not only, uh, we've discovered for, for residential properties, but, uh, the commercial industrial market is very hot in Michigan City. Last five years again, I can look at all the sales or the value of sales. North County is essential, you know, above, uh, Interstate ninety-four, that is Michigan City. And so if you look at the last five years, look at the value of sale, the number of sales, um, you look at, at Michigan City. Um, the largest sales last year were in North County, uh, Michigan City. And, uh, of the twelve, in county wide, six were in Michigan City. Again, most of the buyers are, are over, uh, two, I thought of the buyers are from all the town. Looking forward, we're still committed to implement the strategic action plan, uh, trying to make sure we engage the community in what's happening. We're navigating the pandemic. We've been having, uh, calls twice a month since, uh, March of last year with the CEOs from Michigan City. For-profit, nonprofit, uh, city leaders, uh, we meet, uh, Zoom, uh, twice a month. Now we've gone to once a month, but we have a conference call to talk about how do we make sure the city is going to come back? How do we help nonprofits? How do we get people back to work? So that's a big focus from, and we get it, we get a monthly report from the CEO from Franciscan and the banking community, uh, manufacturers to, uh, keep their, keep their fingers on the pulse, so to speak, in what's going on in Michigan City. Housing, as I mentioned before, there's a county-wide housing study being done right now. We're trying to figure out how to get more single-family houses built in Michigan City and the county. Uh, we're doing the first labor benefit survey ever, uh, this summer and so all, every business will get a copy of that survey. I'm trying to figure out what are some of the wages here in, uh, La Porte County, but also the benefit packages. And we're also working with the CDC to start, you know, working to do indoor housing, uh, in Michigan City. So for all the projects, uh, forces, workforce development, how do we make sure we have people who are trained to work, um, you know, so that's a big focus. How do we, um, get, um, the, the schools, uh, I V Tech, BMW, IU, uh, what else have we been doing, uh, to get people back to work? What kind of training do they need? Heart structure, uh, we rezone three hundred acres of property for manufacturing. How do we begin to do site preparation until the expansion? How do we, uh, get a business park developed? We've been talking to a number of large industrial developers to do, come in and just buy the, the whole fifty acres, a hundred acres. Because it would be nice to have it developed in a uniform way with high-end, the dollar common, so we don't have a mishmash of the dollar. But a really nice first-class business park on the southeast part of the city. So that's one thing we're pursuing right now is how do we find the right, uh, developer, so to speak, to come and do that? Double track, that's a big deal for Michigan City. We can, we'll all mention a little more about that, but that, I hate to use the, the, the term game changer, but that's going to have lasting impact on the city, uh, more positive or negative, but, um, how, how, how do we manage that moving forward with all the people who are looking to invest here? And then software infrastructure, how do we, uh, encourage more entrepreneurship, you know, and, uh, get some out there? How do we tell our story through social media and that kind of stuff? Food deserts, childcare, neighborhood development. So we're again, we're open to, to, for you to do that right now, the food desert, but we're trying to work with other partners to make sure we develop a comprehensive, um, community development, uh, perspective. Downtown, um, downtown is of our, our pride, 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 pride and glory. And of course, a lot of people always criticize all the work that's, that's spent downtown, but, you know, um, I think Michigan City has, has one of the best downtowns in the region and maybe I'm biased, but we have a lot of great assets in our downtown already. And those assets keep growing in our downtown. And so this is why we've, uh, have, had over, uh, twenty-five new restaurants the past seven years, come to Michigan City and want to be in our downtown. Because we have, uh, uh, assets have been here for years. And so how do we use that asset to attract more business in our community, more white collar offices in our community? And of course, yeah, everybody always complain about all this stuff has been done, but there's been a number of studies done across the downtown arena, uh, the last, I guess, twenty years in Michigan City. So one of the things we have done is collected all those studies. So every time we have a developer in town that want to talk about doing something in Michigan City, we can pull out all the old studies and say, here's a link, you know, download them. And so whatever you're going to design, look at all these old studies to, and, you know, make sure, whatever you're doing, you fit within those, those, um, those, those paradigms, because we don't want to have people build something that's out of place or doesn't fit in. There's been some great studies done here in the past, unfortunately for whatever reason they weren't used. So we're trying to make sure that whoever comes in will look at those old studies and say, hey, this is a good, this is a good plan. How can we use that plan to do something in Michigan City? We also have some great tools, um, in our downtown. We have a TIF district, we have opportunity zone. And one of the new, um, tools that's coming down the pipe is the TDD district, uh, which is, uh, because of the, uh, the, uh, double track, the state is going to be creating what they call a strategic, traditional development district, you know, which it will include not only tip, but also, uh, sales tax and, and income tax to, to be able to enhance various projects within, uh, this new line. For the first time, we will include also a midtown, which we will see, we'll be able to use those incentives to help, it's an, it's an advised project in the, in the midtown area. So I think it's a, it's a great move for that area. Double track, as I mentioned, um, I hate to use the word game changer, but this will change our community forever. If you have not looked, looked lately, there's a bunch of, uh, board of housing on, on, um, Eleventh Street. There's a bunch of utility trucks all over the area, just, uh, you know, rerouting, uh, power lines, gas lines, water lines. All the lines that they get, they can be rerouted, but that's being done right now because they're supposed to, uh, begin, uh, construction in earnest, I guess, in June of this year. So, you know, before they can put any shovel in the ground, they have to start making sure, uh, that are hitting, uh, lines. So there's a lot of utility trucks right now in downtown, uh, between here and Gary. They're just doing a lot of work to ensure that, you know, before, um, any, any, anything is, uh, hits the, the ground. All those, uh, you know, power lines and everything else, utility lines are being, have been taken care of. One of the things we're working hard behind the scenes right now is how do we ensure we have a great project for this, uh, station block? And so, um, the city, uh, the city has been lobbying behind the scenes to change the programming for the, um, the train station. One of the things we have lobbied for with the city is to have a mixed-use development on that site, uh, as opposed to us having a two-story, uh, building with five hundred parking spaces. It just seems to be a waste of space to have those, all the air rights above that, uh, facility. So Skylar has been doing a lot of work behind the scenes and we've been, uh, talking to the, the FTA, which is the Federal Transit Authority in Chicago. They give us the green light. So last week we had spent some time on the Zoom call with the folks in DC and they said, tell us how you're going, how you're going to make it work? Or is that going to affect our project? And, uh, let's start figuring out how to make it happen. So that's a good sign for us right now. So we can, we can say, we say that, uh, we are working towards making this a mixed-use, multi-family project. Could be eight or ten stories, but it's going to have an apartment feature where we have people can live upstairs. Probably first, second floor offices or retail on the first floor. But again, this is, would be a great transition point to get the, the midtown area developed where for a long time kind of been, uh, hanging on, but not much development. So this could be the catalyst for a midtown, uh, where you have people living on the south side of downtown and ask for more services in, in, in those areas. So here is the, uh, the station block that everybody is aware of. Uh, this is what we've been given. This is, this is on a one rendering of what can happen. Whatever happens on this block, we have to have favorable parking spaces. So there's going to be a parking garage on the, on this spot. So whatever the, the, um, whoever is putting, what is, what corner in the middle, but again, the goal is to have a private developer. And so we have a public partnership, uh, on that site. And it could be a tower, it could be a flat building, but at any day there's going to be favorable parking spaces on the, on the, on that site. So the developer has to figure out how to make that work, how to make it historically pleasing, uh, how does it fit in with, with, with what's going on in the city? So this does for, for us to be having, uh, the pocket, for pocket purposes. But this is the block, you know, ten Franklin, eleven. And so this is block that's going to be, uh, be developed for a multi-use, um, mixed-use, uh, train station. This happens in the most cities. Again, here's another rendering that could happen. Uh, you said there's, this is just for, uh, talking points for us to look at what can happen at the block. So again, the developer is going to have to figure out how to make this work. We just give trains up out there, that could, that could happen. But who knows, it's going to be a mixed-use, uh, project at the end of the day. I'll give you a quick snapshot of what's going on right now in downtown Michigan City. This is the train station block right here. This is a thirteen hundred radius. This is the sweet spot for parking your car and walking three minutes to this train station. So this is a very highly desired place to be for any developer because you can park your car, uh, anywhere within this area and walk through train within three minutes. These are various areas that developers are looking at, at building, um, mixed-use multifamily. These are a list of, of pipeline right now. We've got, uh, people we're talking to, we're doing different things and different parts we'll see. Again, some have agreements, some don't, so we're just kind of trying to make sure, uh, these are all mixed-use, um, multifamily developments. So that's my quick presentation. I'm open to questions, comments. Um, like I said, lots happening in our city right now in terms of development. Lots of multifamily, we're looking at, um, more, uh, single family hopefully by the end of the year. Looking for developers to do that right now for us and the goal is to, you know, have a, have a great city that, that has, um, you know, workforce housing, high-end housing, single-family, uh, not multifamily, uh, vertical, horizontal, um, but also creating jobs. That's something, uh, my office never stopped doing. We're always there in the road trying to look for projects, looking for a developer, looking for investors, uh, to come to community. But that's something we do non-stop.
Great, thank you very much, Clarence. Very well done. And we're, um, we're all very excited to see everything that you have in the works for this city. Are there any questions for Clarence?
I could, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Hulse, that, that, that was an impressive presentation. One of the things I've kind of wondered for a while myself is, I, I know especially the county tourism board has done a great job of trying to come up with sort of a singularity of an identity and use that to go, you know, more regional, national with an identity to sell. Have, have we thought about something similar for workforce?
Something similar for workforce?
For the workforce, you know, being able to define, uh, the Michigan City workforce to the area, to use that to attract businesses and development.
Not, not particularly for workforce, but one of the things we've, we've, we've been doing is, some of you may be, be aware, MCA S is doing a lot of great things. Uh, they've got an energy academy, they've got a constructive partnership program. They have a welding program with the kids, they can't keep the kids, um, in, in right now. But one of the things we started, uh, two years ago was the, uh, compressor academy. Nobody can take credit for this, but we have a compress air cluster in La Porte County. It began over fifty years ago, joint manufacturing, Selaya, Bania, Southern Polytech. It's probably over a dozen companies with over two thousand jobs in that, in that cluster. And so the longer I was here, I realized there's nobody really looking out for those companies to grow here because they can go somewhere else. And so one of the things we have done, uh, most schools you can leave with two certifications in manufacturing. Right now in Michigan City, you can leave with five certification, three of which are geared towards the air compressor industry. So you can leave high school and go straight to work making forty or fifty grand a year. So this year, we're actually going to update adding, we're going to start working with, um, Sawyer Hitachi, about, it's called a service tech degree. You go straight to the tip because they're selling these new, uh, machines that we made, was made, was being made in Japan. It's not, it's not going to be made in Michigan City. This is going to be the world, the world head, the, the, the North America headquarters. This is going to be their world, their world head, their, their North America headquarters for air compressors. And so they don't have enough people to put on the road. So the goal is to get you to high school, get you to high-tech with a, with a new certification. They'll make you, they'll put you on the road to anywhere in the United States, Canada, Mexico. Be able to set up these equipment in these factories across, across, across North America. So again, we're trying to find ways to enhance the workforce. But one of the things we're lacking right now is people in software industry. So we worked with MCAAS five years ago with a group called Eleven Fifty out of Indy to come here for a week and give every kid a week of code. And now we've got the, uh, the coding in schools, uh, the last year can I kill our, our, our trades that we used to have with other schools. But again, how do we get people coding in schools so we can get those jobs? In Chicago, where you don't have to drive to Chicago, you can code in your basement. We got broadband. So you can make fifty seven a year working on your basement. So again, how do we make sure that in time of those jobs come to Michigan City? And where you're going to have to leave, leave, leave with you. So you're right, at some point, we've got to find the right modaker to, 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 um, to market our workforce. Um, right, but it's an issue of supply. We don't have enough. Our companies are struggling right now in Michigan City, both from the hard manufacturing, the, the, the software skills. People are showing up to work. And so, uh, I know the school, I know how what they call it, ethics application, where you show up to school, you know, the school, you do certain things because that's key. We need to have people show up to work.
Thank you.
I hope it answered your question.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I was kind of digesting that. I, I will say my dad actually was a Solair and Joy employee for a lot of years. So, uh, very familiar with the air compressor industry via him. But, uh, that, that kind of era where, where Joy and Solair and Worthington and all those kind of companies were doing that, it was known from the outside that that was something we did well. And for companies that wanted to innovate, you know, Joy was an innovation and they came out of Solair. And, you know, to have that kind of regional to national identity in something, you know, what, what that is, you know, is based on our workforce, but educational backgrounds we have. But, but that seems like a worthwhile, long-term goal to be able to identify something, you know, whether, you know, having a manufacturing historic base, maybe it's, you know, green energy, um, pieces, you know, the manufacture of solar panels. I'm spitballing, obviously. I, I don't have the research here. But something down the line to be able to sell.
We are, we are number one in the, in the air compressor industry in Indiana and number one in the Midwest, number eleven in the country. So, you know, that's something we can definitely use. So, and the, the, the good thing about that industry is, is not, um, focused on one component. You can do welding, you need to know how to do electronics. You can do, uh, mechanical, mechanical engineering. So it's so broad. I mean, doing filters, and that's the great thing about, about that industry. It's so broad. You can come in from different angles in the industry.
Thank you, Mr. Hulse.
Anybody else? Any questions for Clarence before we move on to the next item? Okay, thanks a lot, Clarence. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Best of luck and you're, as you move forward.
I give you a support.
So our next presenter this evening is about the, um, the home, uh, Homeward Bound group, organization, is there's a, they have a presentation for us this evening. Who is speaking on their behalf?
Hi, I'm Lisa Pierce-Lakowski. I'm going to start and then Ed Marian is going to finish. So I am Lisa Pierce-Lakowski. I'm the Center Township Trustee in La Porte and a member of the Homeward Bound, Homeward Bound, um, member. And, um, I mainly wanted to come and talk, and thank you, Skylar. You mentioned this a few times and a couple others did also. We do have a, a housing shortage in La Porte and Michigan City both. Right now, we currently have a landlord in La Porte selling twenty-five to forty homes. Michigan City, we have a landlord selling twenty to twenty-five homes. You have the double-track area going on. And the problem is some of these apartments and homes that are being sold that are rental properties, where normally rental properties were between five hundred and six hundred a month. They're now selling them, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate that they're fixing them up, but the rent is now between a thousand and a thousand two hundred dollars, which is no longer affordable housing for a lot of the, the residents. If you look at social security disability income, that's only seven hundred ninety-four dollars a month. So it's a little hard for somebody to live on seven hundred ninety-four dollars a month when they had to pay rent, NIPS going water. So we're looking for, um, each of the different, um, areas like the building committees and stuff like that to start being more creative. Like in my office as Center Township Trustee, I had to be a lot more creative in this last year to help residents so that we didn't have people living out in the streets. So we're, we're coming to you because we're wanting you guys to start being a little more creative to help us start to build more homes for our residents that are needing more homes. Mainly the city and county being more creative for the size of the house, housing and requirements per square feet and stuff like that. With the rental rates going up and the cost of living, you know, not, not rising, we're, we're struggling right now. We have a huge housing shortage in La Porte and Michigan City. And we're going to see more and more homeless people if we don't do something about it. So as a member of Homeward Bound, um, I was involved with going to Austin, Texas for the tiny village along with Lee Colburn. And we brought that information back and have taken it to a few other organizations. But I'm going to let, um, Ed Marian talk some more. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Here I am. I'm Ed Marian, fifty-eight seventy-seven Wonky Road, Michigan City. And as Lisa explained, we're really talking about affordable housing. It's a growing concern across the country and here in La Porte County and Michigan City. I provided two documents to the commission for their consideration. The first is a letter from the previous city planning director dated June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, regarding a committee that had been formed and was to begin meeting to discuss the concept of tiny homes. Tiny homes is, is something that's happening across the country. And in fact, right now in Elkhart, the South Bend Tribune ran an article just yesterday about how city officials are behind this tiny home movement, dealing with low-income people, giving them affordable housing. But Craig had made a mistake in that letter. He thought Homeward Bound was considering a tiny home village as a housing solution for members of the community who are suffering homelessness. But tiny homes cost money. They're not for the homeless. Our shelter system is working well and has cut half, cut in half the time that La Porte County residents are suffering from homelessness. And we can give you the stats on that. But the second document I provided is the ALICE report for La Porte County. ALICE stands for Asset Limited Income Restrained Working People. These are employed people in Michigan City and La Porte whose income totals less than the cost of living in our county. They are the working poor, families with young children and the elderly paying thirty to fifty percent of their income on housing. These are the people who need tiny homes and affordable housing. Their number is growing. And, you know, Clarence's report and forecast is great. You see how housing values are going up. But when your income is limited and you're, you don't have the assets, that's not good news for you. It's like when a neighborhood is gentrified in, in Chicago and all of a sudden the people who live there can't afford to live there. Almost two years have gone by without the meeting that Craig told us about in that letter. And I'm just speaking for Homeward Bound. We are frustrated by a lack of progress in Michigan City considering this problem, which is going to spiral out of control very shortly because we see that across the country. It's frustrating to our members to have questions and not get a return call from the planning department. So our local nonprofits now deal with disenfranchised of our community, homeless, low income. But it's a city issue. It's a city responsibility. And this should be on the city agenda and the planning commission is right at the top of the city as far as looking forward and as, as Lisa says, being creative in regards to zoning. Craig said there's a worry that, that tiny homes will affect the, the housing values around it. Well, not if they're in their own neighborhood. That's not the way it works. And I, you know, I'm, I'm thirty years in real estate, in and out of real estate, thank God. And, uh, I have a, I was a real estate attorney in Chicago. So I'm just saying, I'm asking you to focus on this because as the city booms, but we lose the housing, we are going to have more and more people who cannot afford the housing. Yeah, you're on disability of seven hundred and twenty or seven hundred and eighty a month. You're in trouble because you can't find those rentals for five to six hundred anymore. Anything you want to add, Lisa?
The only thing is, if you, if you want more information, um, on the tiny villages and what they do for the community, you can look at, um, the one in Austin, Texas. And it is done by Alan Graham. He's the CEO and founder of Mobile Loaves and Fishes. And he built a huge community, um, of tiny homes there. And also they have some mobile homes also there. But it was funny because when I, I go here and when they first got ready to build it, a lot of the people were not in my backyard. It's going to bring our real down. Now, this property is going into phase three. They're adding another four hundred and fifty tiny homes. Everybody in the neighborhood loves it. A matter of fact, the mayor wants them to build another one on the other side of Austin to help more people. And they're seeing that their property rates are actually going up and not going down. So check that out in Austin, Texas. You can just type in tiny village in Austin, Texas. And that's, you know, that's just a start of something that we could do here. And like, like, you know, Ed said, it's not just about the homeless, but we are going to have many, many homeless in La Porte, Michigan City if we don't start building affordable housing. And then we're going to be in trouble. So it's, it's a matter of doing something now rather than later.
And I would just ask you to Google the South Bend Tribune article from yesterday on the movement that the city of Elkhart, obviously they did the planning necessary to allow it to happen. And that's what we need Michigan City to do. Thank you.
I have a question for both of you. What is the difference between, um, having a, a tiny home? I, I assume when you say tiny home, you mean a standalone building by itself, correct?
Right.
So what is, why, why wouldn't we just build more affordable apartment buildings rather than spreading people out into single-family homes?
Well, apartment buildings. Community. We're talking about a community, building a community.
And yet that can't happen in an apartment building?
That can happen in apartment building, but it doesn't often. And what we're telling you is apartment building rents have been going up phenomenally. So you're not going to have somebody come in and build a huge project and not want to return on their investment. And yes, there's government subsidies, but there's only so much government subsidies. If you talk to the Michigan City Housing Authority, they have a waiting list of like two hundred and forty people waiting to get on section eight. It just, there's too many people. And again, their incomes do not match the standard of living index for La Porte County.
And Lisa, with these tiny homes, and you mentioned the community aspect of this, are these homes rented or are they owned by the occupants?
It could be, it could be either way.
So there's a potential for home ownership.
Exactly.
If they're not homeless, they're working, low-income working families. So perhaps they could own their own home and we'd have home ownership residents and not just tenants in an apartment building.
Right. And, and the, the one thing about Community First in Austin, Texas, the one thing about that is some are owned, some are rented. But the main, the main thing when I talk about community, because sometimes you have a lot of people that have, they just live better in a community. Put a front porch on somebody's house. Means when somebody's walking down the street, it's kind of inviting. You see somebody sitting on your front porch, it's more inviting. So it's making a community to make people that are struggling with mental illness, addiction and, and other things like that. It might make it easier for them to live in a community with a lot of people surrounding them rather than Joe living here, Tom living there and stuff like that. So it's, it's community, it's community living.
It's a, it's a different kind of community than just the large apartment building.
Right, right.
And, and building there that aren't necessarily neighbors, so to speak.
And let me just mention, I was a hood housing counselor for six years. And one of the things we emphasize, even for people with low income is, it's a lot cheaper to own a house than to rent one. It really is on the day-to-day cost and you get appreciation. But not only that, a six or a hundred square foot home is a lot cheaper to build and people can get a mortgage that can, that they can afford. And that, that's where with home ownership now, you have to have a lot of income in order to afford, even at the low rates, in order to afford a mortgage.
Are the homes conventionally built or are they modular or some other way that making them less expensive?
There's all sorts of ways. They have, um, I forget the term, but these paper-designed homes that the computers actually build. They have prefab ones, they have onsite-built ones. And if you just do a little research across the internet, there are tiny home villages springing up all over the place that are approved by the cities and they, they go through the zoning, et cetera. You know, just like a manufactured home site has to have its own zoning, but it has to meet certain requirements. Well, we can do that, but it's the planning commission that has to come forward and say, this, this is what makes sense for Michigan City. And that's why we want you guys to do it.
Be a little proactive, start thinking, be a little proactive to start thinking about some of these issues here and see what we can do, just like the petition earlier to address some of these zoning issues.
Well, and I will tell you at Community First in Austin, Texas, where this is the largest one there is, and, and a lot of people have taken off from there. They have organizations that actually come in and build them. They have churches that actually adopt a plot and build that and completely build it, furnish it and everything else. And then it's, you know, sold or rented out to somebody else. So, you know, once you do something like that, you could have like Rotary Club might do one, Kiwanis might do one, and stuff like that. You get the community involved to make a community.
I've talked with some of the school, like at AK Smith and the MCAAS schools, and they have construction programs there. So with the, the instructor there and some of the students in the trades, they can participate in. So you can bring the community and even the young people involved in some of these things as well.
That, that's what's happening in Elkhart now also. The, uh, the trade schools are bringing students in and it's training for them, but they're actually building a lot of the dwellings.
What's, what's the rate side of, when we talk about the tiny homes, they're, they're not two thousand square foot homes. So are they five hundred to a thousand square foot?
Or five hundred to seven hundred, eight hundred. You know, when you're single or when you're an elderly couple, you don't need the room that you needed before.
Right.
My kids told me if I don't clean out the garage, when I die, they're throwing it all away.
So I have a question. Does the village need to be located somewhere near, like in, in, in the city with close proximity to, to something? We're not talking about just taking, building a village out in, in the farm field somewhere, right?
No, you'd want it someplace close to like a bus service or something like that. Doesn't have to be, you know, right in the city, like in Austin, it's outside, but it's still on a line. So that, you know, there's transportation.
Okay. Cause I assume that, that a lot of the people then don't own automobiles or?
Well, a lot of, you know, like I said, you know, if you're on an income of seven ninety-four a month, there's not a lot of money to own a vehicle. So a lot of them don't have a vehicle.
Okay. Is each homeowner responsible for maintaining their own house?
If they own it.
If they own it, that, yeah, if they purchase it, they do. If it's still, if it's still a rental, then it's owned by the community, you know, whoever built that home or that, the community, but.
That's usually, that's usually an Elise who takes care of what.
Right.
So, so Skylar, is there, is there going? So, so Skylar, is there, is there going to be some kind of a, a group put together to, to look at this, like Craig had proposed in that letter of two years ago?
We can do that. We can reestablish that. I will say though, right now, we have a housing study going on right now that will address affordability in housing in this, in the city. It will give us a real time data, meaning what are affordability? What is the AMI? What's affordability? We will get real time data with that. Clarence, do you recall when that, are you, are you, if you're still listening, do you recall when that study is done?
We're looking probably towards the end of July, so.
We've already kind of gleaned information, put together information, if you will, all, all that stuff. It's just a matter of and what that's going to do is it's not just tiny homes we're missing here. It's not um, it's, it's a spectrum that's pretty much missing. We got high end and then old houses that are reselling. We, we don't really have a lot of apartments. If you look at apartments, we don't really have a lot of new apartments going in specifically downtown or uh anywhere really in the last few years. Um, we don't have townhomes. Townhomes are something that's needed, but, but I think the point that uh uh Lisa and and Ed are making is that there's also an affordability aspect that's missing as well. And um, you know, that's a, that's a social equity issue with respect to that and and just trying to figure out creative ways. I, I, I think it's not just tiny homes. It's, 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 it's across the spectrum, you know. But that being said, uh, our comprehensive plan, kind of com- co- uh, con- sorry, my, getting my words twisted up here, contemplated this. Um, and actually, if you go to our comprehensive plan, we actually ha- have a section in there on tiny homes and clustering. And actually, the, a lot of that come from uh the planners that did that comprehensive plan are actually out of Texas. So they had some experience with that. Um, I think it's just a matter of making sure that their clu- you know, the clustering of them together. Um, you know, I don't know that it can be done in a, in a blanket across the city to some extent, and it's going to have to be a cluster. But I do think also you want to hit on those factors of, there has to be, it can't just be stuck out in a cornfield on the edge of town. But that, that's, that's not fair either to some extent, you know. Um, so we just have to be conscientious and and really um really pointed in what we're trying to do, you know, uh, what we're trying to achieve.
And Skylar, if you look at some of the plans that Homeward Bound has come up with, um, the latest one is like a quad. We've got four basically, you know, houses together. So, I mean, we have a lot of different options that we've been, you know, trying to put out there. But I, I, like I said, being creative, a lot of it is because, you know, square footage is, is a big stickler. You know, you've, you've got to start being creative to start making changes. So that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and we've talked about those things.
Tiny home village is not the only option. You know, there's, there's separate sites where smaller homes could be built that are affordable to, to own.
And I think, you know, I think a lot of people have it in their head too, that if you ride around our city, um, we have there's quite a few very small houses here. Um, the post World War Two houses are, you know, those are less than a thousand square feet, some, some of them. The Lusstron Homes, there's about four of them here in the city. Those are smaller homes. They were meant to be affordable after World War Two. They were meant to be affordable and achievable, you know, at that point in time. Um, so they're still in existence. Uh, I can think of a few that have been remodeled that are probably five hundred square feet. Uh, they're very small. So I guess my point in saying that there are maybe not just clustering of these. There may be other places that they fit in uh with respect to that. And and that's, you know, and I know to Ed and Lisa, we've talked about AD accessory dwelling units. Um, granny, you know, my most, some people call them granny flats or or mother-in-law suites, you know, they, they numerous different what they're called across the country. Um, we already make exceptions for, uh, a lot of our code right now has ADU uh accessory dwelling units by right into those. Some of them, you may recall uh uh through BZA, we've had to get approved. But for the most part, you know, a lot of the zoning right now does allow ADUs, which is another way to achieve affordable housing. Uh, I know a lot of cities have used that for density, affordability, et cetera. Um, you know, so maybe there's a, um, you know, I, I, I know that uh at one point in time, there was talk of encouraging, how, how do you encourage people to build accessory dwelling units and, and, you know, on their garage, you know, et cetera, so. Um, but I think there's a lot of options, you know. I think it's just a matter of, of really nailing down and trying to look and see what we're gonna, what we're gonna do with this. Um.
And my main reason, my main reason is just to point out that we do have a housing shortage, and it's getting worse. It's not getting better. So we've started addressing it now. We can't just keep pushing it off. I mean, in Michigan City, you've got the hotel that's going to be condemned here, you know. You've got the houses on Eleventh Street for double tracking. Like I said, the landlord that's selling houses. So it's not something that can just be pushed off. I mean, we've got to do something now. We've got to start figuring it out now. Um, understand we've got studies coming out in July and stuff like that, but we all know that there's a housing shortage. Knows, because nobody can find houses to rent or buy in, you know, the different areas. So that was my main purpose is just to bring it out there that we need to start working on it now.
Amen.
We're not at kind of the mercy of a developer to develop the property and build the houses? Or am I missing like the discussion? I mean, like the city doesn't build houses?
No, we're coming to you because we need the planning commission to be a little more creative, and they're allowing smaller houses possibly, or a quad of houses on a certain um size property. You know, that's what we're coming to you for. We're not asking the city to start building these. There's organizations like Homeward Bound that want to start doing that, but there are stipulations that we're, you know, the problems we're running into. So that's, that's why we're coming to you.
So as properties are identified and builders come forward, then bring their petitions if they need a change in zoning. Do they become a plan commission so we can address those kinds of issues or size?
A lot of it is the size. I will tell you, a lot of it is the size. And that's why, you know, we've, we've got to start being creative. We, we've got to do something.
To kind of expand off of uh what Mr. Wright was saying, I, I, I appreciate where you're going with this. Um, obviously affordability is a big issue. We talk about it. We pay lip service to it every election, and then it just kind of fades away. And I know we have the Evictions Moratorium um expiring here, I believe in Indiana at the end of June. Um, so this is definitely something that's for real. It's on the horizon. But as, as a plan commission member, my question would be, are, are there developers out there ready to make proposals? Is there an idea that's kind of um got some, some merit to it already? Because uh what I would hate to see happen from our side of the issue is for all of us who aren't connected to the small housing ideas, to get into a committee and to come up with all these ideas. And then when we walk out of the committee, it doesn't fit anything that anyone on the outside actually wants to do. So, you know, when Mr. Wright talks about, is there a proposal? Is there a developer? You know, that, that kind of, of back and forth, I think, needs to be a part of the process. I, I remember this coming up in two thousand nineteen, and for some reason in the back of my head, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't the area around Cleveland of four hundred mentioned, maybe? Uh, so, you know, if, if we can start to have kind of some parameters of, you know, maybe maybe an idea of a proposal, maybe not even like a button down, we want this many units in this spot. But, but sort of something to walk into a committee with some parameters to build off of, I think, would be beneficial. Because I think if we just leave it too open ended, the answer we come up with as a, as a disconnected body might not be what the outside world wants to, to do.
If I can address that. We have members on our, it's a foundation, the Homeward Bound Foundation. Uh, architects, engineers, who would be happy to participate with the planning commission. And that was what the original letter from uh Craig said, you know, we, we'd like you to be in there and be involved. We're ready.
I'm hearing like two scenarios going on, like interspersing throughout the city, these tiny houses. I don't know that the public at large would, is going to be receptive to that.
No, I think.
But I've looked at, I Googled and brought up this subdivision that was done in Texas and looked at the layouts and some of the buildings. So the other scenario is not interspersed throughout the town, but a cluster somewhere of fifty, sixty, seventy, however, I didn't count them, but however many houses were there.
And that's what we said. That's what we're talking about. We're talking area where tiny homes could be built. But then we're also talking about, you've got a lot of um empty land where houses have been torn down in Michigan City. You know, where we could put a cluster of, of like the quads of homes. So we're just bringing some different ideas. I mean, there's lots of things that we would like to do as Homeward Bound. But we keep running into those roadblocks because of the square footage minimum.
And if you look across the city, there are the Sears Homes, the Lusstron Homes. Uh, there's still some cabins that are very small, because they were done before zoning was changed. They're allowed to exist, but why not build something new in that size land? That doesn't have to be as big as the neighbor's house. A new home will always increase value, no matter what the size is to the neighbors.
So essentially, what you'd need for us is essentially two, two different changes made, which is minimum lot and um, minimum size, correct? I mean, I, I don't think you'd be looking at a fifty by hundred standard either, right?
It, well, it just depends on how they structure their ownership, like if it's a cluster development on one lot with multiple homes, and they're not on an individual parcel, if you will, there might be a common ownership of that land by an organization. But say the people own the house itself or something to that effect. There's, I don't know, I could see different scenarios coming up with that. With that, but, but no, if you're just going to straight up subdivide, yeah, you probably have to.
Sorry, what?
Is this, was it, is this considered like a long-term solution? I mean, how do you, how are you kind of assured that, you know, you, you build this eighty?
Jeff, I think we're having some uh audio.
House, tiny house subdivision. It's a long-term solution to housing.
Jeff, Jeff, we didn't hear. You kind of faded out. You, you froze on.
Well, that's probably a good thing.
So are you asking if, if?
How, how do you know what's?
Are you asking if it's going to be long-term?
Yeah, go ahead.
The houses or if we are to build the?
How do you know that it's a long-term solution?
Because it's affordable housing. Because we have affordable housing shortage going on. We have more peop- as, as, you know, as I said, or as Ed said, you know, rental rates are going up, but cost of living is not.
Cost of living is.
Is going up.
Well, cost of living is going up, but the, the rental rates. But what I'm saying is, you know, right now, the social security disability income is seven ninety-four. How do you afford something on seven ninety-four when your rent all of a sudden was at five hundred and it's now going to be seven hundred? How do you pay your rent, Nippsville water on top of that? How do you pay for your renters insurance? How do you pay for food?
So I think Jeff, what Jeffrey is asking is though, what if their economic situation improves? And they are able, so then what do they do with the small house? They say they want to move and they sell it, or is it possible for them to add on to it to grow with, with their increase in income?
You're always going to have somebody at that income of seven ninety-four or less. You're, it's always, it's always going to be like that. That, that income goes up maybe thirteen dollars a month. So you're always going to have that. Because it's still going to cost you more in Nippsville Water, everything, all that. Those prices go up every year. But these people that are on, you know, social security disability income of seven ninety-four, thirteen dollars. I mean, it's not, they're never going to be able to afford a house paying a mortgage of um twelve hundred a month or paying run of twelve hundred a month.
So as a cross section of the, of the community as a whole, there's always a need in that class of financial.
Yes.
That financial range always exists for.
Exactly.
Okay.
Downward mobility in the economic scheme there. But like someone said earlier, sometimes there's retired people that want to downsize, and they might even move in there.
And that's what you will see. A lot of people that are retirees moving to, into the Community First Village in Austin, Texas, and becoming a missional to um oversee some of the other people in the community. So um, a seventy-four-year-old lady that I just moved into an apartment today, and I tell you, she was tickled pink. Her apartment is probably the size of my kitchen and living room put together, but so excited because it's a smaller apartment that she can live in and afford without having to worry about cleaning and, you know, everything else. So the smaller it is, it's a lot easier for them to maneuver um, and clean and stuff like that. So, you know, you've got the elderly, you've got the mental illness, you've got, you know, things like that you got to think of too. So.
It could all be ADA compliance as well for.
Right, right.
Hey, Paul, did you have something you want to say?
Yes, uh, tha- thank you. Um, you know, when we're, you're discussing all this, I think that there's one thing in the, in the whole picture that needs to be looked at. Uh, number one is the neighborhoods that, you know, need to have a voice in this situation. Um, notification needs to be expanded in, in the neighborhood. So it's, it's not as easy as having a broad discussion. But uh, it's making people aware of actually what's going on and, and uh, in that whole discussion is bringing out all these facts. Why is there a waiting list to the housing authority? Need to examine that, first of all. Number two, why is Opportunity Enterprises out of Velprazo owning has over, what I know in my research, over fifty units in Michigan City that they're operating in residential neighborhoods. And I, and they're good landlords. But m- my situation is, is this, is that there's a lot of people that live around the second ward, around St. Anthony's Hospital. And they're concerned about what happens there. And notification is a big thing to the neighborhood. All the good intentions in the world are, are grand, but it's the people who have invested in those neighborhoods and have lived there most of their life, just like myself. Is that you can't lose sight of that in the whole picture wh- when you're even discussing this issue. And I, I think as you go on, you need to remember that. Because that's just like Mr. Marion, the keys of hope that were operated on Franklin Street. The people on and up in that neighborhood were not even, according to the law, were not notified, and it was brought in there. They, the people that, the property owners that were uh notified. And there were a lot, there were a lot of people upset about, oh, that situation. So.
So sir, can I ask?
Excuse me, excuse me. Is that in this whole discussion, my thing is to represent the people that have elected me. And how you go about doing something, you need to expand your notification, first of all, and, and look at that in the discussion. And I think also what Mr. Wright brought up is if you're going to create this special zoning now, it is that, that's a whole big process. So yes, there is a how, maybe that, there is a housing shortage. So yes, there is a how, maybe that there is a housing shortage. But you have to look at the whole picture of what's going on. And how we're, this is happening. A lot of it's market driven. A lot of it is. A lot of it is economically driven. And, you know, how, how do we in La Porte County, I want you to think about this. Since I believe everybody's pretty reasonable that's on this Zoom, um, conference tonight. Why is our unemployment rate the second highest in the state? You know, th- these are, uh, uh, major issues. We can talk about housing all we want, but how do we get out of this long-term problem? And a lot, mostly all of these people that I've talked to. And I've talked to a lot of them because I live right down the block from, uh, Keys of Hope. And I had a brother-in-law that was involved with Keys of Hope. Most of them aren't even from Michigan City. So I, I'm not making this up. This is all the truth and a lot of the neighbors know about it. And I can see doing something good, but why do you have somebody when you try to change the, uh, bring, make, uh, rental units more, uh, safe? I believe that, uh, use the safety aspect of it, get people to register. Then you got people complaining about even trying to put some requirements on landlords. And if I'm not mistaken, or if I'm not mistaking, one gentleman said, well, I'll just start selling my units because I own a hundred and fifty of them. So that, there's more to it than just creating the, uh, concept of tiny, tiny homes and, uh, I, I think there's a lot more, there's a lot more to it because usually the people who get stuck on this idea are the property owners in those neighborhoods that have, have most of them are retired because of our, if you look at the Census Bureau, the aging population in Michigan City. So if this happens in a neighborhood, what, 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 what's to say that the rest of them people aren't going to be, uh, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I think that we have certain rules and they've been established. And, and we look, need to look at, everybody's lived with them so far. And now we're going to change the, we're going to change, try to change the whole dynamics of the, uh, zoning laws in Michigan City. Cause that's what hap, that's what's going to have to be done. Is you're going to have to rewrite a lot of zoning rules to even have this housing permissible. So I think that, you know, it's just not an easy fix. Or, or you're gonna go around trying to get a bunch of variances on these lots that we're talking about. So I truly believe that you have to have notify the neighborhood, the community and the real stakeholders in this is the people that have owned these properties for years and years and years and have created those neighborhoods. So that's all I want to say to this, to the plan commission members is you have a responsibility to us. If anything first, just like what we talked about earlier tonight on this petition. So that, that you know, it's hard for me because I know I, I, there's a family that I helped. And I know that there's a lot of people that need help. But we have to, if you want to have a construct, constructive, um, equitable discussion about this. Is you have to look at the chain. So if you want to come with me, because I got about ten beer cans in my front yard that I gotta pick up. And I'm gonna, uh, catch that rascal and I'm gonna ask him to please put them in the, put them in the garbage can. Okay? So tha- thank you for that time and, and, uh, let me put my, uh, thoughts in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
So.
Anybody else have any comments about tonight?
Can I reply to him on a couple of things?
Yeah, sure, please.
Okay, first of all, those people that you talk about are your neighbors, family, friends, et cetera. Um, I'm not sure what you're talking about at Keys to Hope. As a trustee, um, I know Keys to Hope is where our homeless people go at during the day. But I will tell you that they have to have an ID that says they are from La Porte County. I can't send anybody to Michigan City to go to the homeless shelter unless they have an ID that says La Porte County. And sir, we're not asking for any special treatment here other than maybe to lower the square footage needed for a home. But yes, we would have to go through a variance, we would have to notify them, we would have to do all of that. We're not asking for us, for you to go, let us put up a tiny home here and a tiny home here and tiny home there. We're talking about a home that's just not a thousand five hundred square feet. We're talking about a smaller square foot of a home for somebody to be able to afford. And as far, as far as the housing, um, authority not being open, even if the housing authority was open right now, there's no houses, there's no apartments and houses to be rented right now. So, so that would have no bearing at all. Housing Opportunity, we all work with Housing Opportunity. Ed from, you know, his area, all the trustees work with Housing Opportunity. They have nothing available. Jordan from Housing Opportunities calls me once a week. Lisa, do you have any rentals available? We need rentals. Um, Swanson Path Program calls me. Lisa, do you have any apartments available? We need rentals. The Code Enforcement Officer from La Porte, Michigan City. Lisa, do you know if any apartments available? We need rentals. So them, you know, bringing up the housing opportunity and stuff like, I, I'm not sure where that all came from, but we're not asking for special treatment other than to look at possibly having less square footage so that we could build affordable housing. It's all about affordable housing and it's not just for the homeless, it's for the people that make seven ninety-four a month. You know, we're not talking about just homeless. So I don't want that to be, that's, that's what happens is people start spreading those rumors. Oh, they want to build a tiny village for the homeless. No, we want to build affordable housing to house the people that we have in La Porte and Michigan City. So that they have a house, so they have a roof over there ahead. Because like they said, I'm telling you, come June thirtieth, when the moratorium's up, we're going to have so many homeless people. Because there's not, there's no, there's no apartments. Right now, you've got people stacked on top of each other, living in these apartments that are couch surfing. I know several apartments in La Porte that that's part of the problem right now. There's six or eight people in an apartment. When it comes time to board, they're evicted. Where are those six or eight people going to go? There's no other affordable housing right now. So that's what we're trying to fix is affordable housing.
You know, I mean, Larry, I want to ask, uh, Miss, is it Mrs. or Miss Preszakowski? How do you, how do you, how do you, how do you get a La Porte County ID?
How do you get a La Porte County ID? You have to take, um, a lease, your birth certificate, your social security card to the licensed branch to get your ID.
Oh, all right. So does that mean, is there a time, uh, timeframe on how, how you do that? I mean, I, I don't understand it. That's why I'm asking the question.
Well, I will tell you right now, I've got several people that I'm having trouble getting IDs for because I can't get a birth certificate. I can't get a social security card, so I can't get an ID. So it's, it's a struggle.
Well, let me ask you, are they, are they from La Porte County?
Yes, sir. I can't, I am, I'm the center township in La Porte. So number one, I can't help anybody outside of center township. Number one. But number two, none of the homeless, when we had the shelter in La Porte was the same thing. If they were not from La Porte County, if their SIP code was not four, six, three, five, oh, four, six, three, six, oh, or the surrounding right here in La Porte County, they're not allowed in the shelter. I had the city police call me a little bit ago, said, hey, we've got this guy. Where is he from? He's from Florida. There's nothing I can do. I can't put him in a shelter. I can't pay, he's not from here. I can't help him. I'm sorry.
Okay. Lisa and Ed, we really appreciate what you presented to us tonight. We take it to heart. We take it very seriously. And I'm going to, I want to be involved with this and I will speak with Skylar and we will get the ball rolling on doing something. And I, anybody else who wants to join us and be part of this, we welcome you. Um, but we need to, um, we need to put some structure to the committee and start talking about what we're going to do here. So I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your presentation tonight. We understand the urgency now. And we will do our best to try and solve this problem.
Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Comments or questions tonight before we sign off for the evening?
Uh, I believe Mr. Granquist wants to be a member of that committee as well, Mr. Granquist.
Yes, we, we started setting it up a year and a half or two years ago, I think. And I volunteered at the time. And then we ran into some of the closures, quarantines and stuff, and nothing ever happened. So I would very much like to be a part of that. I will also disclose to everybody here that I am a board member of Homeward Bound as well. So I do have a very, uh, very strong interest in this matter with Lisa and Ed.
That's great, great. Dan, we'd be glad to have you. Anybody else?
Larry, before you wrap everything up, remember you do have to open up for public comment.
Okay. So is there any public out there that wants to make any comments on this? Please state your name and address and make your comments concise and brief, please.
I, I would like to make a comment. I, I joined late, but I was watching on Facebook, Angie Nelson Dyche, city council person. Um, so I, I didn't, I couldn't find the link, sorry. But, um, just, just in reference to tiny homes, I don't want people to think that affordable housing is a stigma. It's not, um. If you've never been in a situation where you've almost been homeless, like, um, I've been in that situation before where I've almost lost a home. Um, people don't understand, um, and the stigma that they place on people. And a tiny home is still home ownership and I don't think people understand that. Um, if you haven't visited one, um, it's a good place to play senior, it's good senior living. Um, it does, it's, I don't want people to look at this as, um, this is going to devalue my neighborhood. It actually might build the value up in some neighborhood. So I, I just wanted to share that, um, uh, my, my daughter, um, was working at, um, uh, uh, organization, a nonprofit in Tallahassee a couple of years ago, and I went to visit and it was a tiny home community. They had their own community, they had their own gardens, um, they were self-sustaining. Um, they had, um, uh, services on site. Um, there was a lot going on in, in, and it became a thriving community. And I just, um, this is an opportunity. Everybody can't afford to buy a home, maybe like I can now. But at one point I was in the midst of trying to, almost losing a home. And where my lights were about to be, get cut off and where I had to sell a vehicle to pay for my light bill. So we need to understand that our average income here in Michigan City is a lot less than the majority of La Porte County. Um, if you, me, just did a presentation with Unity Foundation over a month ago where, um, the average household for African-Americans is thirty, thirty, low thirty thousands compared to, um, Caucasians at sixty-two thousand dollars. So there is a, a, a disparity in our community that we need to address. And, and we can look at building homes and bringing apartments, but if someone can't afford to live there, we're just, I, I mean, what are we going to do? So we have to, um, find a balance where we can build something that is, um, first of all, doesn't cost as much, doesn't, doesn't take up as much space. Because we have to account for those people. And, and I don't think people understand that if you've never lived in that, in, in those shoes. And I, I just want to speak on behalf of those people because prior to Nipco and all these other positions that I've had, I was working three jobs, okay? And trying not to get my house foreclosed on. So just understand that this is important for the community and it should not be a stigma. People are proud of these homes when they have them. And I just want, want people to hear that directly from me. I'm in support of, um, projects like these because they are necessary. Because, um, we have a lot of people on fixed incomes that will not be able to afford the rents that are about to come as development enters, um, into Michigan City. So I just want to share that. Sorry for taking up time and sorry for jumping on late. But as I'm listening to it on Facebook, I'm like, this is, um, we need to change the, the, the tone of, of what, what we're trying to get done and accomplish here. And, and make sure we represent, um, citizens that need affordable housing and not slum lords. Um, I'm talking good, clean homes and not, um, slum lords who are not taking care of their homes. That, that's a whole nother matter that we as a council got to deal with, but great, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anybody else need to, um, want to say something this evening from the public, open for public comment?
Paul. I, I'd like to ask, just put this thought out there. Have, have any of the, uh, boards that, uh, are established, um, to come up with ideas like this tiny home idea? Has anybody had any discussions with any of our, uh, bigger not-for-profits in the, uh, community to, uh, run a program like is, is ran out of, uh, Opportunity Enterprises out of, uh, Velprezzo? Because they, 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 they actually, it's a subsidized housing project. Has anybody, uh, thought about, you know, replicating what they're doing? And keep it, uh, 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 community-based in, in our community to, uh, help people that are, as you say, from, have a La Porte County ID. I'm just putting that out there. So
Well, I think once we form our, once we form a committee, that's certainly one other thing that we will address. So. Uh, any other public comment then for this evening? Okay, hearing none, there's no other public comment, uh, comment period is closed. Um, is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
I'm going to adjourn this exciting meeting.
Back it.
And our next meeting is then on, um, Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at six o'clock via Zoom. And, um, hopefully we'll have something new to report in regards to this, so we can keep the ball rolling on it.
Absolutely.
And Lisa and, and Ed, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. We, we take it to heart and we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Lisa.